Here ye, here ye. Hamlin County Commission Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Chris Cutshaw presiding. Please remain standing.
Thank you, Harley. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Hammond County Legislative Body Regular Monthly Meeting on this Thursday, October 19th, 2023. As we get started, Commissioners, please remember to have your mics on, address the chair. I'd like to call on Commissioner Hahn if you would, please, sir. Lead us in prayer.
Thank you. Spare heads. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we once again thank you and praise you for allowing us to come together to do county business. We ask you to watch over us and make our decisions true, to make our decisions pleasing to you, Lord, and that all we endeavor and all we seek in life that will be pleasing to you and uplifting to your kingdom. We ask God that you be with those that can't be here tonight for whatever reason, that you'll watch over them, bring them comfort and peace. Guide us now, Lord, direct everything we endeavor. Amen.
Thank you. Commissioner Harville, would you lead us in?
Place flag, please. Attention, pledge. Now pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. And clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Thirteen present.
All right, we've got thirteen of fourteen here. We're ready to get started. Okay, we have no item one. We'll move straight to item two. Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Okay, we'll move into two A regarding general comments for non-agenda items. First on our list is Dan Pelgram. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a non-commission sport. I just want to talk about the Frightmare Manor that's in Talbot over this past weekend. I usually don't talk about it much because I don't hear it inside my house or anything. I would feel like I would be vindictive if I tried to do something. But that changed this Friday, I should say Saturday morning, at 12:30 when I heard a car from their parking lot that was blaring all the way through, and I'm about 600 feet away, through my walls and everything, and song playing was "F U," "F A," white baby and all that. And I think it's right next door to the church. I knew they couldn't hit, they're not responsible with a car, only because, you know, somebody out there, but it should have been closed by 12:30, you know, and they actually didn't end that Frightmare Manor until five minutes to one. And that was for Friday, October 13th. The Saturday, they ended at 12:30. And then, of course, the Sunday was 10:35, which legally, that's okay, but they fall under Maristown, so I just feel like they're not getting enforced or not being told or something that they should follow and be stopped at a certain time. And then, only once, if you go to Pigeon Forge, they're shut down way before that, and so was Gatlinburg, and even the other one that's in Philadelphia, what is it called, Dead Man's Farm or something like that, they shut down at midnight. So I just feel like you've got no consideration for anybody than you would. And even though most of the time it don't affect me, my neighbors are closer than I am, and it does to them. So I just wish they all be the shepherds, be taking care of the sheep, we rid the sheep, and protect us from the wolves. So pretty much all I gotta say about that. You want me to go straight to my agenda item next?
No, sir, we'll, I'll have to call you back up for that. Is there anyone else that would like to address non-agenda items tonight? You may approach, give your name and address, and you have three minutes. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Cassie Slabecorn. I live on 7329 Sweet Bird's Dock, behind Frightmare in the Red Barn. And I got up here at the last meeting, and one thing I noticed after, when y'all were talking about the wheel tax, was you don't want to make it complicated. You don't want to overthink it. I don't understand why the noise ordinance has to be any different than that. Number one, there was no noise before when we were living there, and then when this establishment came in, all of a sudden, we have to tolerate all kinds of different things from that establishment. We didn't have that before, and in my mind, that shouldn't be. They should be held responsible for that. It's manufactured noise from there, and that's all I'll say.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will now move into item two B regarding agenda items. First on our list is Charles Pitt.
Thank you. Wanted to talk to you about the regulation and stuff for the RVs and campers, okay? Seen the article in the paper last week, and so, once I read the article, I went and pulled up the commission, the committee meeting with that on the agenda for that. You know, people work hard, they pay property taxes, and unless they're doing something to, you know, cause harm to your property, they pretty much should be able to do what they want to do on their property as long as it's not lewd or, you know, causing issues with people getting rest and stuff like that. You know, a camper on a property, it's their property. They pay taxes on it. This commission benefits from it, this county government does. But I want to challenge each one of yous. This weekend, while you got time, or next week, I want you to take a drive out to Cherokee Park and drive through their campground. If we have a problem with people putting campers on their property, maybe we can move them to Hamlin County Cherokee Park Campground like the other ones. Folks, they're building permanent structures over campers, building decks on campers. There's no sewage out there, okay? They have tanks that they drain into. How long have they been out there? I can promise you this, there's campers that have been out there over five years, okay? And we're worried about what people do on their property. You need to be managing county property, okay? I mean, go out there and let me ask you, think about it like this. As a county commissioner, drive through there and look at it, and tell me, or would you be proud to show off that park? It's the only park the county is responsible for. Go look at it, and then decide, should we be telling the residents, the taxpayers of Hamlin County how to manage their property when the county's not managing it? Okay? And one thing that I heard during that committee meeting is the residents need to be coming to us to ask us what we do. No. I want to remind you all that the folks on this side work for the people on this side. Thank you.
Thanks, sir, for your comments. Number two on this list for agenda items is Dorothy Short.
My name's Dorothy Short. I live in Russellville. I live on a disability, $15,988 a month, and a wheel tax increase will really cut into me, the matter of me eating, basically, because it'll take part of, part of the money that I have to spend for food, I'll have to pay on wheel tax, and that's all I got to say about it.
Thank you, Ms. Short, for your comments. If there's no more on the list, is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on agenda items? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Commissioners. May I pass this?
Sure.
Go out into beer tax for Michael's Pizza Cottage.
Excuse me, what was that? Beer?
The beer permit.
Okay.
For Michael's Pizza Cottage. You look on the application, they put, they said the nearest school was Talbot Cumberland Presbyterian. Actually, if you look on the first page, the Head Start School is right next door to it, and on their form, I don't know what the name of this form is, but it says, "The county has adopted a rule prohibiting the sale, storage, and manufacture of beer within 2,000 feet or some lesser distance of the church, school, or other place of public gathering." And as you can see, it's a lot less than 1,000 feet, that little school. It is a school. And definition of that school is a federal program for income eligible children ages zero to five years. Head Start helps prepare children to succeed in school. Children who attend to Head Start participate in a variety of educational activities. They also receive free medical and dental care, have healthy meals and snacks, and enjoy playing outdoors in a safe setting. Services offered to meet the special needs of children with disabilities, and Head Start program is operated by a local nonprofit in almost every county in the United States. So I just want to shrink that over there since I don't know if anybody ever been down there, but it was not mentioned. They're all small kids there, and it's right next door.
Yeah.
And actually, less than 500 feet from the place. And I did, you don't know exactly how much, I did my laser finder, I can tell you exactly how much it is now for it is, and the church is actually less than 2,000 also. And I know they said they had it in the past, but I don't, I don't know what was there in the past, or I don't know what's there now. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address our commission, this commission on agenda items?
Pendenoe Joe Stevens Road, I'd like to address the wheel tax. This is a New York Times article. U.S. Consumer Prices Rose 3.7% in the Year Through September. There are people, as Ms. Short is an example, but there are hundreds of people in Hamlin County who live on a fixed income. She had given me her statement. $988 a month, that's it. There aren't any side gigs. She was injured on the job when she was fairly young. And now she survives. She doesn't live a lavish lifestyle. She doesn't go to Starbucks and give up a latte in order to pay a wheel tax or a wheel tax increase. And she is just one of hundreds and, I'm sure, thousands in Hamlin County. They don't even know about the wheel tax. And that's one reason a good thing to do would be to let people know and let people vote on this. The other complication with the wheel tax, and if people knew this, I know they would be extremely offended to think that Hamlin County has a pot of money, unbudgeted, and the mayor took money out of that, gave it to the school system, took out property tax money, and put it on that 100 and, well, we'll say 104 million, but that's just principal. If you throw interest, that's about 185 million or more structure over there. And you're going to go and take money out of the pockets of people living on a fixed income when there's money available. And most of you voted for the mayor when he did that, and I didn't hear anybody worry about, well, what'll happen next year. All I heard was the mayor saying, well, we might need to go take more of that pot for the jail. You've ignored paving for years and years and years. There's money available, and you don't need to go into the pockets of citizens. If things go south, maybe look at it then, not now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on agenda items? Okay, moving on. Item three, we have nothing. We will now move to item four, Calendar Rules Committee. Chairman Doughty, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have item four A, which is approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Did you skip one?
Forgive me, I have missed one. Item three, I skipped over that. May we back up, please? I did overlook this one. It's for nomination and appointments, appointment to the Marstown Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I have totally overlooked that one. Commissioners, if you will, from the mayor, I'm requesting your confirmation of the following appointment to the Marstown Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Bobby Hahn, for a three-year term through August 2026. I need a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Motion passes. My apologies, I overlooked that one. Now, we will return to item four, Calendar Rules Committee. Chairman Doughty, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have item four A, the approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on consent calendar items? Seeing none, let's vote this motion. Commissioner Howell stepped out. I can't answer for. Absent. Can we do that? Excuse me? Okay, hold on. Commissioner Howell, we have one item on the board waiting on your. All right, thank you.
Twelve yays, one nay.
And this motion passes.
Have item four B, the approval of the regular calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on the regular calendar? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yays, one nay.
And that motion passes.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Item five, we have nothing. Item six, the approval of the consent calendar.
Motion approved.
We have a motion. As it loads up. And we have a second. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yays, one nay.
And this motion passes. Commissioners, we will now recess as the Hammond County Legislative Body and convene as the Hammond County Beer Board. We will now consider item seven A, beer permit for Lindsey Danielle Maury Klein, Michael's Pizza Cottage, 7248 West Andrew Johnson Highway, Talbot, Tennessee, 37877. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Well, you know, what Dan brought in front of us is pretty close, and, you know, anyway, that might be something to consider not passing the beer permit simply because, now, I don't know how you fix it, but it is right, you can step out one establishment and see the other, so that's pretty close. And according to regulations, that's not supposed to be, so. That's what I have to say about it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Walker, you're recognized.
My question, it said that the property in the past had a beer permit when it was another pizza facility?
Rendezvous Pizza.
Rendezvous, yep. Was, how long ago was that when that was in effect?
I don't have that information. I think we may need to, can I call on the attorney, please, for your?
It's probably been three or four years, Mr. Walker, since that license was valid at the rendezvous, maybe, maybe a bit longer than that.
Yeah.
Do we know if that?
Our restrictions.
Head Start was there when that was in effect, or has that been there since rendezvous closed?
I think it's been there, it's newer than the rendezvous. But there's, there's some issues with our distances, and I would have to go back and look and see, but, and I hesitate to say this, but I believe we were given the opinion that we were not able to enforce those restrictions because we had not enforced them in the past. And so, but I, that is a, Mr. Britton and I just talked about that briefly, that we were not, we don't have documentation of that, but that is both of our recollections currently. But I've got nothing solid on that.
Sir, could I ask that, would it be prudent to delay this action and let you check this out?
What's prudent, you know, everybody may have a different opinion on that. I, I think it's up to the board simply to say that they feel comfortable not knowing where those restrictions, and again, we're not certain, Mr. Britton and I are not certain that that is the case, but that is our recollection that we are not, we're not currently able to enforce those restrictions. But, and there's the but.
Okay.
That's not definite, and if the board doesn't feel like it can go forward, I mean, that's, that's going to be the board's call.
Sure. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Green, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. If the rule is there, we need to abide by it, and we need to stand by. We need to know exactly what we are doing. It isn't if it's non-enforceable. I have heard for the last two weeks on RVs, we need to do this and we need to already do that. One is no different than a other. If the rule says it cannot be there, and no offense intended, I've got grandchildren, my heart goes out to them. I think that we need to put it off. That's just my thought, and I'm just one.
I understand. Commissioner Ahern?
I tend to agree. If the rule is there, we need to abide by the rule, but if there's clarification, let's put it off until we clarify, not to say yes or no, just put it down the road.
Okay. Anyone else? All minds clear on the beer board? Yes, sir?
I think we need to clarify, too. Does this nonprofit, Douglas Cherokee, is it classified as a school? I don't know.
Well, sir?
Yes, Commissioner Howell, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. But it is a Head Start, which is kind of, which is a school. And so, I agree, putting it off is, might be prudent. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Walker?
Well, I also think we need to make sure the distance is correct. So, I mean, you know, I, I think everybody's kind of on agreement that we need to put this off till we get a little more clarification on this. People.
All minds clear. We will now reconvene, close the beer board, and reconvene as the Hammond County Legislative Body, and we will now move to item eight A, beer permit for Lindsey Danielle Maury Klein for Michael's Pizza Cottage, 7248 West Andrew Johnson Highway, Talbot, Tennessee, 37877. We need a motion.
Second.
Don't we need a motion and a second, then we discuss?
I was going to make a motion that we table it.
Well, and I figured so much, but just parliamentary-wise, we.
I thought you made a motion.
They both made.
Oh, okay.
It worked?
All in motion.
Thomas made the motion.
Not yet.
I'm sorry.
They made motion to go ahead, and if you need a motion to approve this or disapprove.
Well, no, I think we need to get it on the floor, and then we amend to table. Okay? All minds clear? What we're doing?
We meant, who made the motion?
No one yet.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion, that we table it.
Well.
It had to be, to move forward first, and then we can.
Yeah, we've got to move forward. We've got to put it on the floor, and then we can table it. We've got a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Now, we've got discussion, or you can amend to table. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend the motion to table this item until we can get clarification on multiple items that we discussed, whether we have the right to enforce the distance restrictions, whether or not the Head Start is considered a school, and if the church is within. I thought it was over, but Mr. Pelgram says that it's under the 2,000 feet, so we need to, I need to get out and measure that a little bit as well, and then see if, if we have the right, but the Head Start is not a school, then we can't stop from there. But the, if the church is, and we have the right to, then we could from there. I don't want to stop people, but I, I still think we need to table this until we can get clarification.
Hey, we've got a motion to table this motion. Do we have a second on? Excuse me?
I'll say.
Mr. Walker is second. Commissioners, is there any discussion on this amendment to table this motion for further evaluation of distance, of whether it's a school or not, all the above? What else am I missing?
Whether we can enforce.
Whether we can enforce, right.
Who would be giving us the guidance on that?
Well, we'll have to refer, yes, we will have to refer to our county attorney to get some, we'll need some kind of guidance on this. Yes, sir?
I think the current owners are under the assumption that it was a done deal because of the prior business that was there.
And that, and that is part of our, if in fact the church is within that distance, that's part of our failure to enforce in granting that license before. And so, you can see that, that could very well have been an issue that, where we got an, we had an opinion in our recollection at some point, that because we had not effectively enforced the, the distance requirements before, that we could not then just start enforcing them, and that would be discriminated against those parties.
Okay. So, Commissioners, the way it stands, we've got a motion on the floor, we've got a second to table this motion for further evaluation, which I think is, may be what we need to do. It just delays it a month, unfortunately, for however, but if we're, if they're in the right, then so be it. If not, then, then we'll have to do something else.
Right.
Is there any other discussion? Commissioner Howell?
Yes, thank you. I do remember it being, for years, the rendezvous, yeah, and, and you, you know, they had alcohol there, or beer, beer. And so, that means that it, it is an enforcement issue, and that head start came in there and said, hey, we'll be all right. So, there, there is the quandary, but a, but a, a month will be a bit for the, for the owners, but maybe that'll be good for us, clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Walker?
Okay, I got a question. Since you know about this more, Peggy. When the rendezvous was there, did the head start open up after they closed or during their operations?
Well, I, oh, okay, well, I'm not, so they must have closed to remodel, is what, but I, I remember them being there, but I didn't pay that much attention to whether they're...
I mean, that would be my question, if we, I mean, if the church, and we allowed it, that would be one thing.
That's true.
But if the rendezvous was closed and not operable, and not in business, and then the daycare came, that would be a different, different factor. Then now you've got a school there, or a daycare facility, and now there, then they went in and go back, but you, you had a different use of that building during that period of time.
Little research, I'll do.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, looks like we'll have to put some dates together of when this happened, when that happened, and as the attorney said, we'll just get to the bottom of it. All right, is all minds clear on this amendment to table this motion? We have a motion, we've got a second. Is any other discussion on this motion to table? Let's vote the motion, please. Roll call.
Danny Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Eddie DeGreen?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Nissen?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment to table passes, and we can go back now and vote the original motion down.
Do we vote it down? Mr. Chairman, we voted to affirm, because we amended the motion.
True. Thomas, thank you. Yes, we will vote to affirm the amended motion to table. Does that make sense? Everybody good with that?
Yeah, should be.
Talk to me over here, does everybody understand the terminology?
So, just to...
A yes vote.
A yes vote means we're tabling, because we amended the original motion to include the table.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, sir.
We're voting the whole thing, or on the?
The whole thing.
Whether to approve it or not.
The, the original motion, Wayne, has changed.
We're voting on amendment.
The amendment's already passed, we put the amendment on the original motion.
Then we'll hold it.
Sure.
Thirteen yeas, zero nay.
That motion passes with the amendment. All right, we'll move on now to item nine, Justice Center Public Safety Committee Chairman. Horner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item eight A, or nine A, the change order, number fifteen, for one million, five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second and discussion on this item.
Chairman, on the calendars, it's a million, fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two.
Okay, let's... I see it now. Does everybody get, get that? One million, fifty-five, thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, sir. I will vote no for the change order, for the simple fact that it will put one million dollars to the cost of a new jail. Mayor Britton recently told us that the costs are currently projected to be about one hundred and four million dollars. Because of the constant change orders and the ever-growing cost, we hired a construction attorney last year to advise and help us to control the design and the other files that keep coming up almost every month. That construction attorney apparently done quite a bit of research and sent a memo to Mayor Britton on our jail, Justice Center project, and the out-of-control increases. As a county commissioner, I've asked to see the memo. Mayor Britton has refused to let me see what the Hammond County Construction Attorney has said about the jail project. Fellow commissioners, if you would please, hold up your hand if you have been allowed to see this.
You're out of order, ma'am. You're taking the vote.
Well, you said discussion, sir.
You're discussing, but you're asking?
I'd like to have the rest of my ten minutes, please, sir.
You've got, you've got your time, I just, you're, you're calling for a vote, and we're not doing that.
Okay. Well, as a county commissioner, I'm not allowed to know what the construction attorney has said about the costs, the design files, and the emissions and the change orders on the Justice Center. I will never vote to spend another dollar, and certainly not another one million dollars of taxpayer money on the jail. I'm submitting these comments to be placed in the minutes with my vote.
We have a motion, we have a second, and any other discussion?
Which one do you want to address?
Commissioner Howell?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, this is for that, an additional courtroom? Correct. Okay, million, goodness. Okay, so we, but they were sort of in the plans already?
It was in the original design, but the third courtroom was in the original design, but it was removed, finishing it up was removed and redesigned, to try to avoid a lot of cost. And so, with the interest income that we earned, we can pay for it with, with the interest that we earned over the two million dollars on the bond, but that's what we need to do.
We went back and requested this of them to put this back in.
Gotcha. Okay.
Now, this is our request for this change order.
Okay. And that's the money we'll use, the bond money, interest, yes. Okay. Now, we, when, when we started this jail, didn't y'all have some, okay, we're going to set aside this much money for glitches? We've pretty well gone over with this.
We, well, the, yeah, the contingency, we had a million, 1.8 million dollar contingency fund when we started the project. We're, we're, we've used about, well, we've got about $500,000 left.
Before this?
Correct. And so, but this, kind of going back to my pot analogy, okay, is, is, we'll take this out of the interest pot, and, and then we'll still have a half a million dollars in contingency money for other changes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Commissioner Doty?
Uh, two quick things, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is money that we requested, that they put back into it, and the money is coming from interest, as the mayor was talking. During the time that we were first seeking financing to build the jail, we were going through our financial people at Cumberland Securities, and Mr. Bessler, I think's his name?
Yes.
Came up, and we discussed. Well, then the news media starts telling how the, the Fed is going to raise the interest rate. And we had Mr. Bessler to come back, and I asked him specifically, I said, when do we start going backwards? Because what we were going to initially do is only borrow money as we needed to pay it, where we weren't paying interest. And he said that when we hit forty points, which is four tenths of a percent, that we would start going backwards, we would start losing money over going ahead and borrowing it all at a lower interest rate. So, I made the motion that we borrow all the money right then, and that is where this interest is coming from, because we were able to bank this money to make, make payments, and it built interest for us, and it saved us a lot of money when you look at the, how the Fed has raised the interest rate?
Yes.
Because it's went up almost four percent since then. And he said four tenths of a percent, we would go. So, that's where that's coming from.
Okay.
The other item I wanted to talk about is, I would like to make a motion that we extend a vote of confidence towards the county mayor in dealing with the contract attorney and his decisions on this, to not pass down pertinent information that might jeopardize the attorney-client privilege. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Can we do that after, well, hold on, just say, we do have a motion on the table, and it's unrelated to this. So, let's deal with that and come back to that, please.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the table for the change order. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion that's on the table? Okay, let's vote this motion, please.
Eleven yeas, two nays.
This motion passes. Chairman Horner?
That's all I have.
Okay, next, go, since we're on this item, I'll recognize Commissioner Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, I'll reiterate, I would like to make a motion that we extend a vote of confidence to County Mayor Britton in his handling of the legal matters dealing with our contract attorney, and his decisions as to whether or not to relay information back when it might jeopardize the attorney-client privilege.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Commissioner Richardson, is there any discussion on this motion by Commissioner Doty?
Question?
Yes, sir.
How do we, how do we know if, how do we know how the attorney is going to rule on this if we're not allowed to know about it?
You will know about it. Mayor, would you address that, please? Just the process.
We have, we have, I guess, some, some advice from the attorney regarding some issues dealing with the design and the, the construction to use in negotiations. In talking to the attorney about releasing it to, to the commission, she questioned whether it would, would violate, or release, release was the word she used, the attorney-client privilege. And that would jeopardize, meaning if it released the attorney-client privilege, then it would be a public document, then the parties that we would be negotiating with would have access to that information that we'd be using in negotiation. So, my argument is that we keep it, we keep it private, we, and we don't lose money in the negotiation because of making the document public.
Thank you, sir.
So, we'll never know an answer, we never get the answer then?
You'll see it after we use it in the negotiation.
After we see, in the go...
After we use it in the negotiation.
Have you had any of those negotiations so far?
Not yet, no.
We've not had any negotiations?
Well, I take that back. We have, and we used it in the negotiation over the last change order, where we reduced the change order from about 190,000 to 60,000, and gave them some more time. Then we've got some other issues with, going back to some previous change orders that we're going to discuss with them, that we'll use the information.
Was a commission advised of this?
Advised of what?
About negotiations?
Yeah, since, yeah, for months.
I've never seen, I've never seen a report. I guess you sent a report?
It's, it's, Tony Pettit's been up here talking about how we're going to have, how we had the, the discussion with the contractor, the 25% point of completion, and how we'll have another one. We've reached the 50% point of completion, so we'll have another conversation.
After 50%?
Thank you, Mayor.
So, does this pretty well, I mean, that's, that's a big one, you know, this, this million dollars, so are we, we got to be coming into the close?
There, there will be, I mean, we're starting to get into some of the detail, like going through, like, we're talking with the department heads about furniture purchases, and we were talking about the placement of the court reporter's table and things like that in the last couple of weeks, where we might have to move a, an electrical outlet or something like that. So, it might be some small changes, we may see, and, but the, the only, the only one that I could see that might be of any significance would be what Mr. Pettit talked about earlier this month, about the fallout around the foundation of the justice part of it, where we had the sinkhole, and we're having the geotechnical folks prepare a plan to repair it. And so, and then we'll bid out the repair. And that, that'll be the, I, I don't know of any other, and I think Tony would stand here and say he doesn't know of any other large change order.
So, so, we have some negotiation coming up?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Howell, I'd like to add to you that we, as Commissioner Doty said, we requested that we finish this courtroom once we saw that we had the interest to use on this, and that increased that change order to a million and 35,000 to finish that courtroom. That, that million and 35,000 of this change order, well, the total was a million 55,000, but just for the courtroom was a million 35,000. Just letting you know that that was by vote of this commission to move forward with that. So, back to the, yes, sir.
This, this new courtroom, have we figured all the price it is going to take for furniture and everything else to finish that third floor courtroom?
I can't answer that right now. I don't know that.
Is it going to be more than that?
We've got money, we've got $2 million in the budget for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And so, the furniture that will be purchased for the additional courtroom actually won't come out of that budget, it'll come out of the interest money. But it's, it's, the furniture we have to buy that's not in the contract are four, we have to buy four 12-foot benches for public seating, we have to buy one, two, three, about 12 office chairs, we have to buy about 40 stackable chairs, and about four different 60-inch TV screens. So, that's what we, what it's...
That, adding that other courtroom, there's other stuff in, that in our, like carpet and flooring and...
That's, that's in the million, 35,000 dollars.
That's in the million, 35,000. So, we'll be on that third floor for a million, 35,000.
Third courtroom.
Third courtroom.
We're complete, we're completing it. It was going to be shelled in. When shelled in, in the contract, when you, when you're shelling, we're shelled in three spaces, and there's, the walls are sheet-rocked, but not finished. The flooring is not done, there's no furniture in it, there's no ceiling in it, there's, I think, limited ductwork done. So, all that's added in finishing the...
Scraper system already in it?
It'd be already in it.
Okay, folks, we've got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Doty, vote of confidence for the mayor to do his negotiation. We have a second. Mr. Richardson, is there any more discussion on this? Is there any more discussion on this motion? Let's call the roll, please.
Debbie Aher?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hine?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Peggy Cow?
Yes.
Rodney Wong?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Colin Walker?
Yes.
That motion passes. We'll now move on to the Finance Committee. Item ten, Chairman Hahn, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item ten A, Resolution twenty-three forty-one, wheel tax resolution revision, second vote. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Before we do discussion, commissioners do be reminded this is a two-thirds vote on second reading. Any discussion on this item? Commissioner Green?
Yes, sir. I would like to amend his, his notion to the effect that we have a referendum for the citizens of Hamlin County to make that decision, being it comes up in March fifth, two thousand twenty-four, which is the next Republican primary, I think, as well, sir. And it would give the citizens the opportunity to make the decision just exactly like they did in two thousand two.
We have a motion on the floor to take this resolution to a referendum in March of twenty-four. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
And we do have a second. Now, do we have discussion on this motion and second for a referendum for the wheel tax on March twenty-four? Any discussion?
Can I speak?
Sorry, no. You still have the floor, go ahead.
If you need to let, let Mr. Bobby go first, I don't care.
No, you're, you're still, well, all right, we'll come back to you.
Hey, I didn't mean to jump in front of you.
Mr. Hahn?
Just a procedural question. Didn't we vote that down in committee?
We did, but she has a right to bring that to us in this full body.
First of all, we've had more than one citizen tonight speak about how their incomes was restricted. So it's just a matter of us representing the public like we need to. I have heard for the last three days from people all over Hamlin County that they don't draw enough to meet this. One of them told me, said, we don't need out. We do well to get to the grocery store. We don't go to them and get coffee. We do well to eat, to buy our groceries. And some of them went far enough to show me their grocery receipts for the week, which I'll be honest with you, I spend a lot more than twenty-one dollars a week. So I think we need to consider the citizens. Several people draw nothing but social security. I know a lot that draw less than nine hundred dollars a year, a month, pardon me. But we just need to consider those. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any more discussion on the amendment to take this to a referendum March of twenty-four? We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Let's vote this amendment off the board, please.
Debbie Aher?
No.
Chris Cutshaw?
No.
Thomas Doty?
No.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
No.
Bobby Hine?
No.
Tim Horner?
No.
Peggy Cow?
Yes.
Rodney Wong?
No.
Mike Reed?
No.
Mike Richardson?
No.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Colin Walker?
And that motion fails. We will now go back to the original motion on the floor. We have a motion by Commissioner Hahn, second by Commissioner Doty to vote the wheel tax resolution. Is there any more discussion on this item? Commissioner Howe?
Yes, sir, thank you. If we're hitting pretty darn close to it, would it be impossible to ask this money that y'all are determined to raise for the, for the roads which need attention? But we need the, if this should pass and the money, it needs to be for asphalt, not for shovels.
It's already been designated.
You already made that. And is it, can we, can we say, Mr. Poole, will you come in and tell us how much asphalt happened this month?
That's what he's agreed to do.
We've all agreed. I'm a happy camper, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, do you, do you recall the memorandum of understanding that we did as this commission to give some designation to that?
Okay.
Commissioner Green? You get your turn.
I'm sorry.
Wayne thought it was his turn and-
Well, you go ahead and let Wayne go first.
No, you're on the board here, it's-
Okay, thank you.
We're going in order.
I oppose the twenty-three-dollar wheel tax increase. Why? Because there's existing money available for road paving with no wheel tax increase. Mayor Britton knows this, your commissioners know that. In July, Mayor Britton supported and county commissioners voted for a money swap to shift one point nine million dollars of that existing money to the Hamlin County Jail. But commission refuses to vote for a swap to shift two point two million dollars of existing money to paving. Yes, money can be used for paving that is available now. Sales tax revenue has grown and continues to grow rapidly with new retail businesses. Property tax revenue that can be used for paving is rapidly growing with construction, new housing and apartments, as well as commercial and industrial buildings. A wheel tax increase is unnecessary. I know people who struggle just to survive and pay their basic expenses, have housing, electric, I mean, things that we all have to spend for, but they barely survive while living on a fixed income such as social security that is less, no offense intended, than the seven, than the nine hundred and fifty dollars a month that Chairman Cutshaw has paid for being chairman of the county commission. You may know of these people as well. Why increase the wheel tax on any citizen when there's existing money that can be used for paving? It's a no-brainer, folks. Use existing money with no wheel tax. Increase to provide the two point two million a year for paving instead of taxing and taking more money from struggling citizens to provide only one point four million for paving. That's all this wheel tax is going to do for this year. It is not going to come anywhere close to that two point two. So why do it? If you still need it next year, with the, with the budget, we can do it then.
Yes, sir.
You're completed, okay. Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
This, if wheel tax, I'm sure it's going to pass. I think the votes are for it. But is this money going to go in as general fund?
No, sir. It goes straight to, is it one seventy-six? Okay, yes, it's Fund one seventy-six. It will go directly for-
What is the name of that? What's that called? Construction Oversight?
It's a highway capital project.
Highway capital project. If it's in highway capital projects, can Barry not decide that he wants to buy a new hot melt machine or skid steer or pickup truck or dump truck?
It has to come to you for permission.
Pardon?
He has to come to the commission for-
He has to come to commission. Okay, my thing was, is make sure that it goes for nothing but asphalt, not, not for dump trucks, skid steers, heavy shovels, that type thing.
Yes, sir.
Because if, if he can go in there, and he's got to come back to that for us, I know he's wanting to buy another hot, hot melt machine and a roller and some other stuff.
Let me just remind, remind the commission during the budget process, okay, there, there was some interest money put into, there was interest money put into the capital, highway capital projects fund to buy the equipment that Wayne is talking about-
Right.
To have a second patching crew. So you, you may see in, in the, in the checks and that kind of thing, how we're buying some of that equipment for him. It's because it's being paid with interest income.
Right.
Is that a second or a third paving, patching crew?
Second.
Second patching. With, with the hot box and, and I think there's a mini paver-
Yeah.
That was approved and the machine that, the skid steer and the attachment to it.
So you're saying that none of this will be coming back out of his capital? Everything will be going for asphalt?
Yes, that's the agreement that he and the Road Commission and the County Commission made on that memorandum of understanding, that that's what the money would be used for. Yes, we have a document.
Commissioner Neesmith, it may have been when you were out there for a couple of months, but a memorandum of understanding that this body passed, that this money, if, if passes, will go directly to highway fund. Capital projects to be used for asphalt. It's a memorandum of understanding between the Road Commission, between the Highway Superintendent, and between this county commission.
Well, see, I was out then, so I didn't know, did I?
No, I, I acknowledge that, I agree. Are you complete?
I'm finished.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Green? I'm sorry, I thought it was Neesmith. Commissioner Doty, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make it really short. I've said this the whole time. I'm the one that made the motion for it. I still stand for it. The two point two million that Commissioner Green just mentioned, yes, it's there. With over four hundred miles of roads in Hamlin County, that will total up over a hundred and twenty million dollars to pave them. That'll take fifty-four and a half years at the two point two million dollars. I never said, nor did anybody on this commission, that this wheel tax would pay it off. It is a start. We will have to get money from other areas as well. This two point two million is a surplus in sales tax right now that looks great. That sales tax money may not be here again. This money will. This is something that can be budgeted. This money, the one point seven million, one point eight, somewhere in that neighborhood, it will not pave all the roads in a legitimate timeframe. But it is part of what it will take to get started. And we have to start somewhere with something that we can budget year in and year out, not just something that we've got a little extra in a pot. The additional housing coming in has been tossed out. With additional housing comes additional roads, comes additional resources that are needed, comes additional students in schools. It's not just a wash that we get extra money. There's going to be outlay along with that income. So I'm for it. I hate that we have, that I feel that we need to add some tax, but that is why. Because if we can do both, then maybe we can get these roads paved inside of thirty years instead of fifty-four and a half, which is what the two point two million would take. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Green?
One more question. This one point seven, and we've got four hundred miles. It takes three hundred thousand for a mile. So that's going, that's going to get us about less, six miles. For six miles going into four hundred, that's how many years you're going to have. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Green?
Chairman Cutshaw, I'd like to have my remarks in the minutes, please.
Commissioners, we have a motion on the table to pass Resolution twenty-three forty-one. We have a motion, we have a second. We've had discussion. Is there any other discussion? Let's vote this motion, please. Reminding that it does take ten votes.
Ten A, zero N.
This motion passes. Commissioner Hahn?
Yes, sir. Item ten B, Hamlin County Substance Abuse Coalition Funding of seven thousand three hundred fifty dollars. And I make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen A, zero N.
This motion passes.
Item ten C, Resolution twenty-three forty-three, broadband-ready community resolution. I make that motion.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
That's for granted, Bobby.
Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please. Commissioner Walker?
Thirteen A, zero N.
This motion passes.
Item ten D, Resolution twenty-three forty-four, a resolution authorizing Hamlin County to apply for broadband-ready communities grant. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen A, zero N.
This motion passes.
Item ten E, Resolution twenty-three forty-five, a resolution authorizing Hamlin County to apply for the Connected Communities Facilities Grant. I make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen A, zero N.
This motion passes.
Item ten F one, Fund one oh one, County Clerk's Office, four thousand two hundred dollars. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Any discussion on this budget amendment? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen A, zero N.
This motion passes.
Item ten F two, Fund one oh one, County Clerk's Office, three thousand three hundred fifty dollars. I make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second on this budget amendment. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please. And this motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you. Chairman Hahn? We'll now move into item eleven, the RV Camper Study Committee. Chairman Long, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Go to eleven A, affirmed use of the two thousand eighteen International Building Codes for Regulation of RV Campers as Permanent Residential Dwelling. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Doty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I've voiced in the past, I think it's a bad idea if we start telling people they can't live in a, in a camper longer than a specific short period of time while they're building a home. Told numerous contractors and such. And basically, if you go try to build a home right now, which is one of the contingencies, they said they would approve a residence, you're looking at two, two and a half, three years waiting list to get somebody to come build. Well, they're only approving this for one year. Or that was the thing that was tossed out. What good does that do those people? I mentioned in the past, as long as they were hooked up properly, by properly, just as a, a mobile home would be with hard plumbing, hard wiring, not extension cords and garden hoses, then I think they ought to be legalized or be legal. Don't think we should have anything on that other than just enforcing what we have on a mobile home. a mobile home. And to some that say the mobile homes are not as, uh, or more sturdy, most anybody will tell you, if you talk to them, if you move a mobile home more than two or three times, you've destroyed it, it's fell apart. They make campers to run up and down the interstate hundreds and hundreds and thousands of miles. If they'll handle that, they'll handle normal day-to-day use. It's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioner Doty. Commissioner Green, you're recognized.
I'd like to first say that I agree with Commissioner Doty to the last degree. If that's all they can do, we need to be able to oblige. And even your permits for the state right now have a three-year extension, and I just got done getting one, so I know for a fact that is there. But if we need to change the code where they can live in them as long as they meet requirements of sewage disposal and so forth, I don't understand why we can't do it. I'm like Commissioner Neesmith, it is better than them being in a box under a bridge. Where is our heart at?
You good?
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Ahern, you're recognized.
Then I understand, Commissioner Doty, that if we give them a permit for a year, are we not able to, if their home is not...
Yes.
Yeah, we can, we can extend it, is that correct?
Yes.
I just want to clarify, just to make sure I understand.
If they're in construction, yes, if they're in the process. Commissioner Nees, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Walker?
You're fine. Again, everybody knows where I'm at on this, okay? We don't let them put single wide trailers in residential towns, okay? But we're going to let them put a camper, okay? That's my thing. If we're going to start saying they can live in campers, then let's just throw the building roads out and let them just leave them whatever they want. I mean, we adopted this as a committee, 2018. These were the rules, okay? There was reasons why we put the rules in place. Just like we're talking about with the liquor board and beer permit and everything else, we have to afford, enforce the rules that we have for everybody in Hamlin County. You can't just use them, pick and choose, well, this person's going to be homeless or they got to live in a camper. Well, are we going to let people just live in boxes on our streets? That's all they can afford. I mean, when does it stop? You know, I, I've fought this with people. Sewage running in the roads, sewage running down in somebody else's yard. We're infringing on other people. People putting five and six campers in their backyard and renting it out and taking advantage of people because of our housing market. I mean, you know, and again, these people scale under the radar of having to pay for taxes and things like that, that we're fighting the burden to provide them trash pickup, bulk waste pickup, and everything else. They don't have to pay that. We can't tax them because they have a camper. So, we're making this too complicated by saying, well, if they, if they have proper sewer, if they have proper water, if they have this, then what are we going to do? We're getting it too complicated. It's easy just to say, these are our building codes, these are the rules, we have to follow them, period. And I know people that this is going to affect. But I also know people that are affected and being abused by nobody enforcing that sewage is running down in their driveway, their kids can't play out in the front yard. All summer long, we have fought with the woman. We have been in court, we've had the state involved, everybody else, and this woman has had nobody help her. Okay, that's why my heart goes out. Just like hearts go out to people that don't have anywhere else to live, my heart goes out to people that can't enjoy their own front yard because we've got feces running across their yard. So, all summer long, her kids couldn't play in their yard, can't play outside. And it's not just her, it's multiple places. Wayne even talked about a place that he went and visited and walked through the backyard, the side yard, and squishing his feet in the yard. How are we going to enforce it if we can't go on their property to look at it? And we're not allowed to do that. That's all I'm going to say.
Commissioner Neesmith?
I understand this is, uh, we're amended under the 2018 codes.
Yes, sir.
Why aren't we enforcing the 2018 codes now?
Great question.
Why aren't we doing it? Why is feces still on the top of the yard? Who is, who's writing the citations? We need to enforce the rules we got.
I agree.
And we're not doing it. I was on the way, I come out through Road Junction today, and all the way out there, before you turn to Jack Green's Junkyard, there's a guy got a camper, got his own pole with his own meter on it, and don't have sewage. He got his own electric pole with a meter on it. We need to enforce our own, we need to enforce our own rules.
You good?
I don't know who does that. Is that planning? Is that code enforcing? Who is, who does that?
That's why this committee's enacted, to try to step forward on enforcement. Commissioner Howe?
Yes, sir, thank you. If, of course, I'm terribly surprised that Cherokee that has the camper thing right smack on the lake doesn't have sewer. That is scary business. Now, if those six people are, with those campers are all building a house, you know, why aren't they connected to sewer? Why don't they have their pole and that? And if we did have that, and it wasn't forced, would that square up the situation? I think if we have those rules, and they ought to be enforced, and, because we're either going to be a community or a camp. And goodness, we were talking earlier about what a nice spot it is to live, but we can't have that sewer running. Never would you, Wayne? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Doty?
Just two quick things. Yes, we can extend the permit, but what's the difference in going ahead and giving it? If it's safe to stay there for three years, it's not going to hurt anything, what's that difference? Number two, the statement was made by, you know, if people don't have enough, we're going to let them live in boxes. If you look at the census, we had hundreds, if not thousands, in this county at the last census that were living in boxes or less.
That's good, I didn't know.
I don't want to tell them that there's a roof out there and they can't live in it, myself.
Okay, Commissioner Walker, one more time here.
Okay. When we say enforcing, that's why I'm asking, as a commission, that we agree on the 2008 Building Code. Then we have somewhere to start, to say, this is the rule of how Hamlin County's going to enforce it. Who's enforcing? It's everybody wrong. The electric companies shouldn't put a meter up for a camper, but they do, because there's no state code saying you can't put it up, okay? Same way if I want to put it up for my garage, or if I just say, I want an extra pole in my backyard for my kid to play, put his motorized bicycle in. I can do that. At least when we say they can do it with a building permit, and that's something we have later, as a commission, can agree on, to say, when they get a building permit, before the camper can go on the property, we require you to have proper electrical, proper water, and a proper sewage before the camper can be moved in and you start construction on your home. That way, if it's there two years, because you can't get it built. They have everything wrong, but we have to start somewhere. That's all I'm asking you to do, is to vote to get it started, that we have a rule that we can put in place to be enforced.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing.
Yes, you've already got.
Yes, yeah, I know this, I know this.
There's a sewage dump station. All campgrounds have to have sewage of some kind, and there's a dump station out there, and that's where folks who use the campground, that's where they put their sewage is in, is in the dump station, and then it's, and then it's enforced periodically. And if we, and we've caught people who have not used the dump station, and they've been asked to leave.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, folks.
Can I ask the mayor a question before he sits down? About the, about the dump stations, this clarification, please. You said there were dump stations. Is it something like a portable situation? And I don't mean to be rude, I'm just naive on this.
It's on the road leading into the back campground.
Okay.
On the right.
On the right.
Thank you for the clarification, sir.
And then we have, then we have septic systems for the bathhouse and the bathrooms and all that. So, we, we need all the codes and all the requirements.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second to affirm the use of the 2018 International Building Codes for Regulation of RV Campers as Permanent Residential Dwellings. We have a motion, we have a second. We have discussed this. Commissioners, are we ready to vote? Let's vote this item, please.
10 yeas, 2 nays.
This motion passes. Commissioners, that concludes our business tonight. Couple of things of, yes, sir, Commissioner Doty?
If I could just ask everyone in the audience and our commissioners, our Director of Drug Court, Ms. Penny Knight, there's a lot of hardship and her family. Both of her sons are pretty bad shape. One had a head injury, and the other one had a vehicle wreck, all within just a few days. Y'all could just remember them.
That's right. Thank you, Commissioner Doty, for reminding us of that. Penny Knight's family needs our prayers. Commissioners, a couple of items. Note, our next meeting, if you'll note, is early in the month of November because Thanksgiving, we will meet, committee meets on November the 6th. Commission will meet on November the 16th. And, Commissioners, I would like to draw your attention to, we hope to have a Commission Christmas get-together as we did last year, and if you would, please note December the 5th or December the 12th as potential days for a Commission Christmas dinner. Each will, each one of us will provide that. All minds clear? We re-adjourned.